Notice is hereby given of a Friendswood City Council Regular Meeting to be held at 5:00 PM on Monday, March 2nd, 2020 at Friendswood City Hall, Council Chambers, 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas regarding the items of business according to the agenda listed below. Calling this meeting to order, we'll start with an invocation by Reverend Bob Flick from Good Shepherd Episcopal. And following him, we'll have Scouts Jack Murkis and Nicholas Wheeler come up for the pledges.
So. Let us pray. Creator God, we give you thanks and praise for your presence in this chamber. For the powerful presence of your Spirit. You have created us, each of us, in your own image and likeness. You have given us the authority to care for each other, to be drawn into unity and peace in your presence. And in this chamber this night, Lord, we know that your Spirit is here. Open all of our hearts and our minds, indeed our whole being, to what it is that you might be calling us toward as we gather in the building up of your kingdom in this place. Again, Lord, we praise your holy name. Amen.
Honor allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Item four, communications from the public. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the city council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. The council may refer this item to the city manager or direct this item to be placed on the next regular council agenda. Out of respect for those speaking during public comment, please refrain from any outbursts or interjections to include, but not limited to applause and/or disparaging noises from the audience. Doing so discourages others from voicing their thoughts and opinions and disrupts the meeting. Furthermore, any personnel complaints against a city employee aside from the city manager, city secretary, city attorney, or municipal judge cannot be discussed under this section. Please contact the city manager's office for concerns involving a city employee. Rob Roy.
Thank you, Mayor, city councilmen, city employees. Just a few months ago, I was here with actually the same issue that I'd like to discuss. It's a problem with a... Problem with my neighbor who lives directly behind me who has a Great Dane. They have another small yapper dog, but the Great Dane is causing great, I don't know, just havoc in my life. This past Friday, for example, I was... Fell asleep on the couch because it woke me up five mornings a week before. And the Great Dane started barking until about 10:30, so I decided to leave my house for a while. Came back home at about 11 o'clock and it started barking till 1:30 in the morning. Now, I did actually call the owner of the property. He may or may not have contacted, I don't know, but for some reason it's been bliss for a couple of days. The dog hasn't woke me up in the morning. But I did file on the 25th an open records request for the prior Saturday. It had woke me up between 6:00 and 6:30 in the morning, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. And so I haven't gotten a response yet on this one. And that's a non-observed misdemeanor request. After this one, I did actually call and talk to the animal control, Robert Lee, begging him in essence maybe to get out and talk to the homeowner to see if he could get some resolution. There's another non-observed misdemeanor, 1210, and for a few days of barking problems. And for some reason, nobody has responded to me on this one. And here's one on 10/28/2019, 8/28/2019, 8/16/2019, 9/13. And anyway, 7/25. So it's a problem that's been going on. Only one time, I got lucky, a police officer actually got out there and gave him a citation. And apparently, they gave him three months deferred adjudication. And guess what? It was bliss for three months. As soon as that was over with, the problem started reoccurring again. So the reason why I'm here is I'd like whatever assistance I can be given, you know, to try. You know, they're just, they're ignoring me on the non-observed misdemeanor. I mean, I'd be more than glad, you know, to go to court and meet my neighbor. And I've knocked on the door, I've tried to speak to them, but they don't answer the door. So that's why I'm here. Thank you for your time.
If council will allow me, I'd like to move up. Item 6A, which is a special recognition and acknowledgements. I see that we have the presenters in the audience. Presentation of the 2019 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report from Auditors Whitley Penn, presented by engagement partner Lupe Garcia CPA.
Mayor, members of the city council, good evening. I'm happy to be here tonight to present to you the results of the city's fiscal year 2019 financial statement audit.
The presentation will come on the screen. Is it here?
Is there one? There's no presentation.
Well, I have the slides here in front of me, so I'll go through it.
I guess we were supposed to pay extra or something.
Oh, yeah. Okay. So on slide number two, other members of the engagement team in addition to myself. Dan Hernandez was the engagement senior manager. He's actually here, present at the meeting today. He led field work along with Corbett Nixon, Chow, and Kevin as the associates. Tom Peterson was the concurrent partner. His role in the engagement was one of quality control. He reviewed the comprehensive annual financial report, the federal single audit report, and key work papers in our audit file. The audit process is a journey and it takes several months for us to complete the audit of the financial statements. It started last summer during interim field work. We're onsite. At that point in time, we're focusing on internal controls and on compliance, understanding how the city operates and how transactions are recorded in its general ledger. Once the fiscal year is over, we return and we're back onsite for another couple of weeks. At that point in time, we're focusing on the year-end balances, transaction classes, and obtaining audit evidence in order to issue an opinion on the city's financial statements. So as external auditors, so I'm on slide four.
There we go.
So as external auditors, we can issue one of three types of opinions. Disclaimer would be that the records didn't exist or were in such poor shape that an audit couldn't be completed. A modified opinion would be where everything was okay except for the items we noted in our report. And then an unmodified opinion is referred to as a clean opinion. And so that's the opinion we've issued on the city's financial statements. So on slide number five, our report that's contained within the city's comprehensive annual financial report states that our opinion is unmodified. That means that the users of the financial statements can rely on the information contained within the report as being materially correct. On slide six, so we do, in addition to auditing the financial statements, also perform a single audit of the city's federal programs. And so there's two additional reports that are required since we performed that additional compliance audit. First is we have to report on the city's internal control over financial reporting. I'm happy to report, we didn't identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in the city's internal control over financial reporting, nor did we identify any non-compliance that was material to the financial statement. So the second report was also a clean report. The third report, which is on slide... On slide seven, the schedule of expenditures of federal awards totaled 1.1 million. The federal program that we tested in the federal single audit was the disaster grant public assistance related to Hurricane Harvey that was 900,000. So the third report on the city's compliance with the requirements that apply to this federal program, again, unmodified opinion, no question cost, no non-compliance, so a positive report on the federal single audit. Moving on to slide number nine, just some financial statement highlights at a high level. The statement in net position is the city's balance sheet on an accrual basis of accounting. This accounts for all the funds of the city, general fund, debt service, capital projects, enterprise. Total assets were $219 million. Largest portion of that balance is the city's capital assets netted depreciation. Current and other assets can be cash and investments and receivables. Total liabilities were $108 million. The bulk of that balance, again, is going to be the city's long-term debt related to the acquisition and construction of all those assets. Net position is the difference between your assets and your liabilities. And that was $117 million on September 30th of 2019. If we look, if we drill down on those long-term liabilities, and you can see on slide number 10 is the breakup of the long-term liabilities. 54.2 million is the city's general obligation bonds, followed by revenue bonds outstanding of 25.2 million. The next largest liability is going to be the net pension liability. That was 14.4 million. You can see there was an increase there from the year before when it was only 7.9. With the pension plan, it's being reported on a calendar year basis because TMRS, the Texas Municipal Retirement System, operates on a calendar year. So the information that's included in the city's 2019 financial statements is for the previous calendar year because that's the most recent year that information was available. So 2018 was not a great year in the stock market. So investment returns were lower than they had been in the previous four years. So that led to a decline in the value of investments. So that led to the increase in the net pension liability for this period of time. TMRS is still a well-funded pension plan, so there's no alarm, nothing to be concerned about. This will reverse the very next year when things bounce back. Unamortized bond premium, 6.5 million. Total long-term liability is 130 million. If we look at the city's general fund and how it performed compared to final budget, both revenues and expenditures, revenues were over budget. That's a good thing. Expenditures were under budget, also positive. So favorable variances for both revenues and expenditures. The city had planned to decrease fund balance by 4.5 million. In actuality, it pretty much broke even. Fund balance decreased by 62,000 with the ending fund balance of 14.2 million on September 30th of 2019. If we look a little closer at fund balance on slide 12, unassigned fund balance is that portion of fund balance that's available for spending. On September 30th of 2019, that balance was $10.6 million in the general fund. This does meet the city's 90-day requirement. And on the very next slide, you can see exactly how many days of expenditures that represents. And so that was 131 days of general fund expenditures and unassigned fund balance. That's a very healthy level. GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, recommends two to three months, so 60 to 90 days. So you're at 131 days. So the city's doing well from that standpoint. If we look at the water and sewer fund, which is, provides water and sewer services to the city, revenues exceeded expenses. The change in net position in this fund was declined by 192,000. Ending net position was a little over 41 million in the water and sewer fund. This fund also has a reserve requirement. It's calculated a little bit differently since this fund operates like a business. The revenues are meant to recoup the expenses. The reserve here is 90 days and it's calculated on a working capital basis. So that unrestricted net position does represent 470 days or 129% of this fund's expenses. Moving on to slide 16, I'm going to end my presentation with some required communications I have to make to you. The first one is, our responsibility in this process was to audit the financial statements. We do gain an understanding of how the city operates and that drives the procedures that we deem are reasonable and in order to gain enough audit evidence on, to issue our opinion on the financial statements. We did review the city's accounting policies. They are in line with industry standards. There weren't any new pronouncements the city had to implement in fiscal year 2019. On slide 17, the financial statements do include estimates. So it's important to realize that because estimates can change in the future. Some of the more significant estimates include your allowance for doubtful accounts based on historical collections. Depreciation expense is the city's estimate of how long its capital assets will be useful. And then that third bullet here is the largest estimate in your financial statements related to pension and other post-employment benefit liabilities and related expenses. So we reviewed management's basis for those estimates and they are being presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. On slide 18, we didn't have any difficulties in completing and performing the audit. So we had the city's complete cooperation through each phase of the audit. So we do thank the city for that. We didn't identify any material misstatements that we had to bring to management's attention. We didn't have any disagreements with management when it came to the application of any accounting principles or any accounting estimates. And then on slide 19, the last form of audit evidence we obtained is a management representation from management. In this letter, the city states to us that they've provided us with all the information we've requested, that the city hasn't withheld anything that might need to be reported or disclosed in these financial statements. We're not aware of the city consulting with any other accountants or auditors on any matter. And then the last bullet here on slide 19, during the year, we may provide information to the city, guidance, answer questions, but at no time do we feel the way we respond or any stance we take on any particular matter is a reason as to us being selected as being the city's external auditors. So that completes my presentation, taking you through the audit process, the opinion on the financial statements, some financial statement highlights, and some required communications. If there's any questions about the audit or the report, I'd be happy to take those questions at this time.
Thank you, Lupe. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, back to our work session. First item on our work session is the special event permits item. James Tony stepping up.
And Michael.
Michael right behind, okay. Is he going to run it? Oh, he ran it.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you recall, about maybe three months ago, we met in this exact setting to discuss a situation that was occurring in our Parks Department where we were having an increased number of applicants for large events to be held at our city parks, in particularly Stevenson Park. And so what we did was put together an application process, which we called the special event permit application. And during our discussions, we talked about several things as to why we felt that we needed that permit in place. One was to make sure that the applicants were providing information that was necessary for us to make correct decisions. Also, the application process would outline the different things that needed to be submitted to us as far as local and state requirements for rules and regulations as it relates to different equipment that they may be bringing into the park. So we wanted to make sure that this application process was detailed and it covered everything which would keep, you know, the city staff safe as well as mayor and council safe so that we wouldn't put ourselves in any harm or any dangerous legally. So again, during that, during our time that we met three months ago, we received comment from mayor and council. We took that comment back. Staff met on several different occasions to look at and review the information that was presented. Staff also met with other departments within the city government to get their input as to what they felt was needed in this application process. Again, to keep everyone safe, not only city staff, but also the applicant as well. And during that process, we looked at the application. We know that the application seems to be pretty long. It's a nine-page document. However, keep in mind, there's only three pages that the applicant actually has to fill out. The other remaining pages are for information purposes so that they understand what's required and what's not required. We're also going to take into account that the document can be a fillable PDF. That'll make it a lot easier for them as they're applying for the special event application. Before I move on and turn it over to Mike, I want to see if there's any quick questions that you might have about recapping what we discussed during our last work session and then this current one as far as the updates that we're going to run you through.
James, did you consider separating the two applications for residents and then for like nonprofits and corporations that want to do park activities instead of just one huge nine-page document? Did you think about maybe the residents who want to just rent the pavilion over here might not want to go through these pages? And like the nonprofits and corporations who are going to have the large events, have a specific application for them versus the residents who don't want to have 270 or 1,000 people out there? Did y'all consider that?
So this application is strictly for large special events. We still have our normal application process for residents who would like to rent the park for a picnic, for, you know, a party, an event at the splash pad. Yes, we still have our simple application for those residents and non-residents if they're just having a simple event in the park. If you're having a large event, a public large event, special event, this is when you would fill out this application. Any other questions? If not, I'll turn it over to Mike where he's going to run you through the updates and changes that we came up with. And then from there, we'll close it.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. All right. So like Mr. Tony said, you know, it only applies to public events. That mainly for us, we want to understand how many people are expected or how many people could potentially be at the park. Because a lot of times we get rentals where it's a public event and they tell us it's 300. And then somebody calls and says, oh, there's 3,000 people at the park for a Pokemon event. And so we're trying to make sure that, hey, you know, you know, how are you advertising? How are we looking at? And that's why we wanted to make sure that the application is very thorough. We discussed having DRC meetings. And that way, we can have, you know, any and all departments involved, you know, such as PD, FMO, EMS, even Galveston County Health District, just to kind of put their two cents in, put all of our heads together and say, hey, okay, what are you going to be doing? You know, are you going to have a stage? Well, the stage is going to have, you know, fire protection and all that good stuff. Just to make sure that, you know, and we can bounce back and forth. Hey, did you make sure to do this? Did you make sure to do that? Oh, you're going to have, you're going to be advertising here or you're going to be selling this. I would make sure you can't sell this. You can sell that. So that way, we can just go around, have a roundtable at the DRC meeting. We also implemented a third-party cleaning attendant with our janitorial company. So it's only 1425 an hour. Instead of having our park attendant there, that's $25 an hour. So it saves the applicant almost $11 an hour on fees. Mainly, their, the main part of their job is, you know, restocking the restrooms, making sure the restrooms are clean for large events. So we figured this is probably our best option. Plus, you know, we'll have two weekend guys just in case there is a maintenance issue such as a toilet that breaks or things that happen. We can call somebody in and make that maintenance repair. But most of everything is related to cleaning, so we instituted the cleaning attendant. Also, the expectation of the Friends of Police Department is to provide security for all public events held on city property at a rate of $55 per hour per officer. This is just going back, our neighbor pricing that we listed before. This is just their pricing and their deposits, you know, for Alvin, Pearland, Galveston County, Harris County, and Galveston. And so this is the same, even though it says new pricing, this is the proposed pricing that we listed. We haven't changed anything. The only thing we really switched was just the deposit, that way you can see the deposits first. So the fully refundable deposits first, then the user fees, which is for nonprofit or tax exempt, and then user fees for commercial, for-profit on that fourth column. And if you're asking about user fees, just want to make sure that you know everything that it covers, such as our administrative costs, the cost for the application, the cost for us to meet, you know, to have the DRC meeting, all of our park supplies that are associated, such as restocking for toilet paper, electricity, water, park repairs, emergency maintenance callouts, things like that. And then also, the cost, I know Councilmember Scott asked about the cost associated with park repairs in the last five years. We estimated around $25,000 compared to everything that we've, that we've put in, such as, you know, includes concrete repairs, you know, sand for ruts, sand for volleyball courts, trash can replacements, pressure washing, electrical outlet repairs, grease removal, graffiti removal, sod replacement, some event preparation for parking lots, a number of tree services, trimmings, repairs, staff cleaning, and then of course, staff time and labor to come out, make the repairs and all that good stuff. So we've come up with a few different payment options to present. That way, council can advise us which way that you would like for us to go. So the first option is for, for the reservation to pay the full deposit associated with their event. Pay the full deposit upfront. And then all the user fees, security fees, and cleaning attendant fees would be seven days prior to the rental date. So they would have up to the, you know, seven days before the event to make those other payments. Payment option number two would be to also, you know, when they make the reservation, get the book on the calendar, they pay that full deposit. And then they would pay 50% of all user fees seven days prior to the rental date. And then if they're, you know, raising funds or in the event, selling tickets, then they can pay the other 50% seven days after the event. So obviously, it's a couple of options to think about, but we wanted to make sure we presented something that you guys would feel is helpful. So any questions or comments, any direction?
Option one, get your money upfront. What is your cancellation policy? Is it seven days before the event? If in the event, they come up and they said, hey, we're not going to have the event. We want our deposit back and it's seven days prior to the event, cancellation, no problem?
That's why we did the seven days because once you've paid, if you cancel, we can give you the deposit back.
Yeah, I think, I think option one's the best. You get the money before and not after.
We can also incorporate the two as well. It's getting the money upfront, seven days or so, 10 days, they decide they can't hold the event for whatever reason. We'll refund them. I mean, we're not trying to keep many money. I mean, they have a refund issue, we'll refund them. But I like the idea of us trying to get the money upfront so we don't have to be chasing individuals too.
Yeah, you don't want to do it after. We do that with the fishing tournament and stuff. We have to pay upfront.
We're gladly able to set the policy to give their money back if they're...
Yeah, the weather always changes in Texas, so we want to make sure we accommodate for that.
I think this is great. You know, the message here is that these parks are for the citizens to enjoy. And of course, if they want to rent the pavilion, citizen comes and uses the old method of reserving. But if it's a big event, you know, I mean, point to the for-profit organizations that are doing things here. You know, we have to cover ourselves. We have to make sure that we have the correct lease and attendance and the money come upfront so that if they damage something, you know, we're not putting it back on our taxpayers to fix the broken sidewalk or whatever. So I think you guys hit it right on the head. This is, it's great to meet you.
I was just going to say, I like option one as well because generally, you have to pay. For example, if you're doing your retainers, you have to pay them upfront. So I would think that you could be in the same boat as that. The one thing I don't follow, just explain to me a little bit, the DRC, that's something new. How are y'all anticipating that's going to work?
So when it comes in, you know, of course, we'll get special events that, you know, half of it's filled out because they're not going to have large structures. They're not going to have a lot of that. And so we might not have a meeting. You know, we'll, we'll send it around to, you know, all the different departments and say, hey, take a look at this. Do you see that we need to have a DRC on this? Then, you know, maybe there's more detail involved that we're looking at. And then we'll have a DRC meeting and set it on discuss because maybe Fire Marshal's Office looks at the application and says, yeah, I've got some questions about these items or these structures. You know, let's, let's have a meeting. Let's, let's get in there so we can talk about it. I mean, it's, it is a case-by-case basis, you know? But if it's a small event and there's not a lot involved, for example, say a church wants to have an event at the park and they are inviting the public, so it is technically a public event. But, you know, they're, they're only, it's going to be picnic style and there's no structures. It's just underneath the pavilion and they're going to have some games. Well, you know, we want to get police involved, you know, so they're aware of the number of people that are at the park. But, you know, it'll just be kind of passed around and there might not be a DRC meeting. But if it's something where there's, like I said, you know, there's tickets sold and there's traffic that's, you know, all going to be along. And, you know, numerous structures and tents and chairs and tables. I mean, there's a lot that's being unloaded, you know, and picking up from the park. We just want to make sure that, hey, this is, you know, let's meet about this. Make sure we're all on the same page as a city before we move forward that we can advise, hey, you might want to do this instead, you know, just to help the customer.
Do your larger events invite the city departments to their meeting? Do your larger events invite the city departments to their meetings? The reason I'm asking is a lot of times, these people are doing this on their off-hours and DRCs don't typically happen on the off-hours, so I'm just wondering about, have y'all not been invited to the meetings for the larger groups that are entertaining and what have you?
Aside from Texas Music Fest, no. Whereas with Texas Music Fest, we sat down and we discussed logistics with regard to Uber and Lyft pickups, parking plans, contingencies, so on and so forth. Our larger events have had no staff interaction short of, hey, we're gonna have an event out here. We had, for the last large event, had the Fire Marshal's Office out there inspecting the stage and the tents hours before the event because we didn't realize that it was gonna be, that we were gonna have a number of tents. So the intent here is to get everybody, any stakeholder, potential stakeholder around the table earlier, earlier in the process to identify any issues that may exist.
If you're having a large event, yeah, you have to. Fire PD, everybody, EMS, they all need to be there and it takes months of planning. I'm just concerned about how flexible the city's gonna be on a DRC, because that would traditionally be Monday through Friday, eight to five, and a lot of your nonprofits, they have day jobs. So that'd be the only consideration I would throw out, there's that y'all call it a DRC. I don't know if you really want to call it that, if you're flexible about the timing of that. I would just be concerned. I'm with the mayor in that we want to open up our parks to our citizens and allow them to use it, and I wouldn't want to throw an additional hardship on them.
Whether the name is DRC or it's something else, if somebody is after hours and can't make it in, as long as the proper information is provided to staff, we can sit down by ourselves, run through everything, and we can be in correspondence with them until we get it ironed out.
Well, I do see a huge benefit in everybody being around the table and talking together, and you brought up Texas Music Fest, I mean, that was huge. We, everybody shared and everybody threw out ideas and there were things that the Fire Marshal's Office or EMS or whoever threw out that others in the room had not thought of. So there's a huge benefit to everybody being around the table at the same time, there really is. It's just, I don't know how flexible everyone's schedules are. That's what I'm really, that's my point, is the flexibility of schedules.
I'm sorry, if it comes down to it where we have to stay after hours to meet for a meeting to meet somebody else's schedule or accommodate someone, we'd be happy to do it.
Absolutely.
For free.
For free. Other duties as assigned, right, guys? Well, I just, I just, it's been very beneficial, so I would not want to lose the essence of what you all are trying to do. I think it's very, very important. I just didn't know how, what the flexibility would be going back and forth, but I totally agree, and you've got 2,000, 3,000 people, everybody needs to put their heads together. Thank y'all, great job.
Trish.
Thank you. I'm, I'm fine with option one too, I think it's a good plan, but I have a question about the amount of deposit. I know our deposit is larger than anyone else's that you gave us, the other municipalities in the county, except for the county, over 5,000 people. Are we having, do we have a history of having to keep part of the deposits to cover damages or cost?
Yes, in the past, we have kept deposits from individuals for damage, but also to keep in mind, that rate is set at what our deductible is for insurance, so that's per facility. So we want to make sure we capture our deductible in case there's any danger, any damage to any properties.
Correct me if I'm wrong, James or Michael, some of those other entities don't allow for events of those magnitudes that are not city-run events in their parks. So they, they're, they take place, for instance, League City doesn't hold that magnitude of event in their park unless it's a city function.
That's correct. Thanks, guys. Good presentation, good plan. Alright, next is our traffic wide, citywide traffic study. Alardo, you gonna introduce somebody?
Okay, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. City of Friendswood originally commissioned Browning Gate Engineers to conduct a citywide traffic study to analyze the mobility needs of the city. Existing congestion was evaluated, along with potential transportation alternative or infrastructure improvements. The improvements identified in the traffic study would help reduce the delays and long queues that drivers within the city of Friendswood currently experience and would experience in the future. Supporting data will be used to coordinate improvements with public entities such as TechDOT. The study's findings and recommendations were written into a report which BGE has submitted to the city. And Megan Sirkz, to my left here, she's a professional traffic operations engineer with BGE, she's here to, tonight to present those findings to you.
Thank you.
Absolutely not. No, we will, we will keep it much more concise tonight. We're gonna hit the high points and let you know kind of where we left off. So if you guys recall, we met several months ago and we were heading into preparing for our public meeting, and so at that time, we had collected all of our data, we were looking at our initial analysis, and we had an initial list of recommendations. And if you might recall, that was actually a pretty long night and a long presentation as well. So we will keep it high level tonight for everyone's sake. But since we've met, we did hold that public meeting, we have finalized our findings, we are providing a priority, a priority list for the recommendations, and we do have a high-level cost estimate associated with each of them to give you guys a sense of where they're gonna fall. So we held the public meeting on August 14th at the City of Friendswood Public Library. It was a great meeting, it was not maybe the largest turnout we were expecting, but we did get some really valuable feedback, and that's really what we wanted to, to capture and really hear what the residents had to say. So there were a number of comments that we got that I'm just gonna summarize briefly. The first one was looking at the timeline associated with Friendswood Lakes Boulevard at West Parkwood, FM 528, the timeline, so that, that road is being extended, we had showed it in our plan much later. We did confirm with the city that it is under, is under design now, so we are able to pull that forward and we did incorporate that into our 2025 recommendation. We had a comment if we could add an extra turn lane, a left turn lane at 528 and Sunset. And so we did look in at the possibility of re-striping, so right now there's a left and a through right, and we looked at re-striping it to allow a dual left, there are three lanes on 528 that can accommodate that movement, and we did find that that did improve the level of service there, and so we incorporated that into our 2025 findings as well. We looked at, or we were asked to look at adding a northbound right turn lane at 518 and 528. We do have room to do that, so that was also incorporated into the 2025 recommendations. Comment four that we got, and again, these are the summary of kind of the general gist, so I'm gonna stop at five and I won't keep going, I promise. Comment four was 528 at Falcon Ridge needs to be widened to accommodate southbound and westbound turn lanes. Now, this particular improvement would require additional right-of-way, so we incorporated it into our 2030 recommendations, which is when we start looking at where we need right-of-way acquisition. And then comment five was construct a northbound right turn lane at 528 and Winding Way. That's another one that we incorporated into 2030 based on the need of what looks like additional right-of-way for that location. So in general, I think we're all pretty happy with the turnout, the people who did stop by were very engaged and we were very excited to have, have them with us. So what that did for us is it let us validate what we thought was the solutions, and so the feedback we received for what we were presenting was very positive and, and very much in line with what we were thinking. So after that, we went ahead and wanted to prioritize the list. The list is long and there is not one solution, there are several solutions that need to occur over the next 25 years to keep your city moving. But to do that, to put a priority to it, you have to look at certain methodologies. So we resorted to the HGAC methodology for how they put projects on their tip and their RTP. We do that by looking at the cost and we compare that to the benefit that it's providing. So that is a measure of decrease and delay, safety benefits, emissions, those whole concepts get rolled into a nice neat number that we can then use to help rank the projects. I do want to point out that local streets are going to have a lower BC ratio, and it's just, it's a matter of pure volumes. Typically, the local streets are carrying less volumes than the state facilities, so it's going to be harder based on the cost, especially when we're widening, it can be very costly, to see that high ratio. So in 2025 in particular, we did go ahead and we upped where we thought those should be placed, because we think they'll have an impact for your residents and wanted to showcase those higher in the list, even though the BC ratio may be a little bit lower. We've also provided a preliminary cost estimate, and I want to point out, this is a high-level cost estimate. We're using a lot of rules of thumb on what things should cost, and there is no real design done yet, but what we did count for was kind of an engineering fee and a construction So looking at 2025, we had seven items that we identified as improvements that should be done by 2025. Every, you're gonna see it at the top of every list, and that is re-optimizing your signal timings. You've got 26 signals that we studied, and as we add volume, as we account for the growth, those need to be updated to be able to reflect what's happening. And also, as we add lanes and capacity, those signals need to be re-looked at to make sure we're maximizing the abilities that we've got there. The rest of the list, so we looked at adding a westbound right turn lane at Greenbrier and Castlewood, we looked at re-striping Sunset at 528 to add the left turn lane, we looked at widening Greenbrier and adding a northbound dual left turn lane, 528 at Barea Boulevard, adding a through lane at the intersection, so it's a condensed widening through the median, and adding dual turn lanes east and westbound. 518 and 528, northbound and southbound dual left turn lanes, and adding a northbound right turn lane as well, and this is all within existing right-of-way as best we can tell. And then 518 at 2351, extend the turn lanes. So it's a very high list, but let's look at it from the BC ratios. So as you can see, the signalizing optimization comes in at the highest, and that's because it's not overly expensive to optimize. It takes time and it's certainly not free, but it does, it's something that doesn't usually require a lot of construction cost, and so it's a lot of just the engineering and implementation. So that gives that a really high BC ratio. Afterwards, we fall into what we call a little bit more typical BC ratios with the 1.97 and the 1.28. Now, if you notice, 528 at Barea Boulevard has a really great BC ratio, but we put some of your local streets first, and that's because we're recognizing that's limited to the coordination efforts with TechDOT, and it's not as instantaneous and it is very costly. So while it still has a great BC ratio and we do want to see it happen, we really wanted to focus on for 2025, really amping up your local improvements for your local streets and your residents. So looking at preliminary costs for 2025, as I mentioned, the optimization is, is one of the more affordable options with 135,000. Westbound right turn lane was 137,000. Re-striping is actually a very easy fix, because we weren't involving any new pavements, and it will have some coordination effort with TechDOT, but that was coming in at just under 50,000. The widening projects are where we really start seeing the increase in dollars. So you're looking at half a million to three-quarters of a million, to a quarter of a million to 300,000. So, and it's, it's expected. We're adding pavement, you've got to make sure that pavement's gonna hold up, and it just, it costs extra. So if you were to do everything through 2025, you're looking at a total of roughly 2.2 million to keep your mobility needs. Now, this is not all necessarily City of Friendswood. At least half of these are, and some of the more costly ones are on TechDOT facilities. And so the burden will also fall to TechDOT to help improve these roads. And so part of what's happening now that this report is finished is distributing it to TechDOT so they can begin programming these improvements into their RTP and their 20-year plan, so that they can start saying, we really need to be looking at this, now we've got the documentation that says why it's so important. So 2030 has a similar-style list, there are eight improvements we identified for 2030, and this is where we start getting into the need for right-of-way acquisition, which is where some things will become a little bit more costly as we go. And they're similar style, I'm not gonna read the list, because we've, we've gone over them and, and again, for the, for the sake of everyone's focus tonight, I'll keep it short. But basically, we're looking at adding a series of turn lanes where we can, dual movements where they can be accommodated, right turn lanes, left turn lanes, extending them as needed. There are a few, item number six, and for, for instance, is an extension of the Blackhawk Boulevard down by the church, and then again, adding turn lanes. So looking at this list, this is one that we were able to, again, we kept the signal timings at the top, because it's so easy to implement. You will notice the BC ratio is a little bit less than what it was in 25, 2025, that's due to the increased volume, so it starts adjusting that ratio that we're looking at. The cost is about the same, though. And then you can see the rest of them are ranked highest to lowest based on what we can accommodate, and these all involve, again, TechDOT facilities, and so that coordination will be key and having them begin to program it will be critical. So again, here's a summary of the preliminary costs, 2023 is an additional 5.5 million, and again, one more time, this is not all on y'all, this will have some, some inputs and, and some cost sharing from both the county and from TechDOT. And so the, really, the big one is the Greenfield extension for Blackhawk Boulevard, which is just under 4 million. So take that out and everything else is only one and a half million, and hey, that's, that's a lot better-looking number when we look at it. But we do think that will continue to help alleviate Bay Area Boulevard at 528, so people will have that access to bypass that intersection as needed and travel south. The 2040 list, it's actually gonna be on two pages, this is where we really started looking ahead, so we're 20 years out, 2040, feels like forever, but it'll be here before we know it. And so these are where we start getting into much more of the hardy improvements, this is a lot of widening, a lot of widening. Most of the TechDOT corridors we're recommending to be widened from four to six lanes. It's a huge undertaking, there's some huge dollars with it. In addition to that, we are looking and making recommendations for adding and extending turn lanes, so where we might have added them in 2025, by the time we hit 2040, we want to lengthen them to really make sure we can accommodate the higher volumes. There's additional widening in places, and then adding a connection down to State Highway 99 is a recommendation in 2040, when, we, we all know it's coming on some level. I know there's still a lot of questions about funding for Grand Parkway, but I think it's critical that if it does come and when it does come, that there is a connection for your city residents to be able to access it smoothly. So all of that was accounted for in here. So looking at the series of BC ratios again, we, again, kept the signal time, timing, it's low-hanging fruit. Every time we make improvements, it's low-hanging fruit for us. But after that, then we ranked them based on the pure BC number, and we did that in 2025, if you remember, I, we prioritized some of the local streets. We didn't do that here, because a 20-year look ahead's really hard to start justifying something that maybe has like a .3 so far away, when we can more logically put together the higher ranking BC ratio. So that's what you're seeing displayed here for these 15 improvements. And then the fun part, the cost, as expected, the widening is really where the costs are. So if you see line three, FM 528, that corridor widening it all the way to 45, which is outside your city limits, but when we met with TechDOT, they said, there's no reason we'd only widen the middle, we're gonna take it all the way to 45, and we do it, you know, it's $9 million. It's, it's nothing to blink at, but it is something that TechDOT can program, and we fully expect them to help with that effort. 2351 corridor, it's a little over 5 million. And then the connection down to 99, for instance, is a little over 2 million. So looking at all of the 2040 costs, again, high level, it's another $26 million. It's a lot, I know it is, and, and I apologize for just the sheer number of it, but we really wanted to try and capture everything we thought would benefit the city and get it documented so that you've got something to be able to go to these agencies, to go to HGAC, to get the federal match, to get the funding and say, we need this, and we need this by this time, so help us get there. And we think that this study, because we looked at it holistically and we looked at it 20 years in the future, is what you need to be able to go to those agencies and say, alright, guys, show me the money, make it happen, and see what happens. But in general, I mean, right now, I, I know sometimes peak hour is, is pretty rough at some intersections, but in general, the city's functioning well and we want to keep it that way as we move forward. So final conclusions for this, you will continue to have growth, it will continue to provide economic benefit to the area, but that is in turn going to likely increase your traffic. It's going to occur over time, which is great, because it does allow you to grow with it and not just be reacting to massive growth and pushed at the end. We did evaluate or create these mitigation measures on, based on extensive analysis, we included the public input, and we evaluated it based on the ability to alleviate the traffic concerns for the next 25 years. And so we hope that you will continue to use these as a planning tool and be able to start getting some programming for the long-term improvements moving forward. And I'm happy to take any questions you may have at this time.
Excuse me, did you look at all at extending what we're gonna probably start calling Friendswood Parkway from 528 up towards Pearland?
We did. We did, and it is listed in here as one of the improvements. I'd have to go back through the slides. I'd have to go back through the slides to find specifically where it was, but I believe it was 2040 it needed to be in there for sure. We stopped at the city line, though, city limits, and we know that there's still some discussion about where that alignment's exactly gonna fall, and there's still some extensive coordination with Pearland to get it best placed. But absolutely, and that will continue to aid the mobility for the city.
To add to your question, Mayor, the beauty of this study is that it's a living, breathing model if we need to go back and make an adjustment to see if that alignment were shifted somewhat, what the benefits would be versus the cost, and we can take that information to TechStop.
I just think this is so important that we have this done, and thank you for this. I think it's very thorough, and it will help Mo and our staff and future councils to decide what to do. Thank you.
It was our pleasure.
When you looked at the traffic, you know, in the last 10, I don't know, 10 or 15 years, Friendswood's only growing maybe 5, 6, 8%. The traffic has grown much worse than that. So clearly, a lot of our traffic is now coming from our borders across us. Did you look at any of the things that those cities might be able to do to help out in the traffic? Was that part of the study or not?
We were really restricted to just looking within the city limits and identifying the solutions. But when we met with TechStop and a lot of the facilities you're talking about that are cutting through Friendswood are TechStop facilities, they're very cognizant that they can't just make improvements just within our city limits. It doesn't, doesn't serve the greater purpose. And so they were actually very quick to say, "Well, if we're widening to the city limit, we're gonna take it all the way back to 45." And with that, we're gonna, we're going to have to account for that, and we're gonna have to coordinate with the other city agencies to share the cost or do whatever it is we have to do to get it programmed. But if we're gonna do this part, we're gonna take it all the way, and we're gonna make that connection whole. We did look at, when we were looking at 99 and that 2040 timeline, looking at what that would do to maybe shift some of the traffic off of 528 and 2351. That would maybe move south to, hopefully, more fluid movement on 99, and so we did account for some of that as well.
I was just gonna say, I'm a little surprised that, I mean, and maybe it's just because I'm ignorant and don't understand it. But, I mean, the fact that we're working on Greenbrier and Castlewood when the majority of our issues are 518, 528, I don't know why we would take any resources away from 518, 528, 2351, 518, and anything on Sunset. But, you know, the moves to spend money on Greenbrier and Castlewood, to me, seem like, I mean, we're just trying to show that we're doing something. And I don't know, it could be that I'm ignorant. I understand that there's a lot of traffic in that area when school gets in and when school gets out. I get that. But I wouldn't think, you know, that that would be one of our, if you asked me on my list of concerns, that's not even on the radar, right?
And I don't disagree, and feel free to interject. The benefit of doing projects on Greenbrier and Castlewood is not just for the sake of showing some action being undertaken. It's gonna improve the level of service of the entire network in those regions and around the high school and in around folks that are avoiding 518 and 528 to cut through those neighborhoods and cut through those. And honestly, we don't like it, but Greenbrier is gonna ultimately be another parallel system to Sunset. And so folks wanting to avoid Sunset or FM 518 will one day be able to take Greenbrier all the way from FM 528 to FM 2351. So some of those improvements are necessary. Now, that will drastically-
I would not disagree with that, other than the fact that we didn't propose that, right? I mean, so if-
Well, so, but that is what this is alluding to. These are not looked at in isolation. These are looked at as a network and a series of network improvements. And so what we did report on was individual levels of service, and that was one of the pieces of the puzzle. But we absolutely accounted for traffic being able to shift to some of these parallel corridors. You reach a point where 518 can't accommodate anymore, and there's not enough lanes that we can add.
No, I thoroughly get that.
And neither can Sunset. Sunset can't accommodate it either, so you're gonna have to have more parallel corridors.
I'm not disputing that at all. I mean, and again, that's why I think the mayor's question about Friendswood Parkway or whatever it ends up, ends up being called, is a parallel-
Absolutely.
roadway. I agree with that.
But you also have to remember, too, you have a number of local trips that don't necessarily want to get into Pearland, like your parallels to 518, but you do have locals that want to get from 528 to 2351. And it's a local trip in the sense of that we want to be able to accommodate it, and we want to take them off of 518, and we want to do it as safely and as efficiently as we, I really like to keep hitting this, I'm sorry. I'm a hand talker.
You're a hand talker.
We really like to accommodate those. So I want to go back to the priority list. We, you have the flexibility to do what the city needs to do. And one of the things we tried to be really conscious of is we didn't want to just say, "Spend all your money on TechStop roads." Because TechStop, in my opinion, has an obligation to help facilitate their roads. And so then that leaves, okay, well, then do we just ignore the local problem? Well, no, we can't, because we are creating those parallel corridors, and we want to do so in such a manner that encourages safe behavior, not reckless, high-speed, cut-through traffic. Nobody likes the word "cut-through," and we really try to not use it. It's bad words. We like connection, local trips, to make the, to connect those dots, if you will. And that's why we chose to prioritize those a little bit higher. And a lot of it, if you notice what it's above, it's above TechStop facilities. And so that was really what we were trying to showcase, especially in 2025. When we get down to the bigger picture in 2040 and even 2030, the local street connections really did fall to the bottom, and the need really does fall on your TechStop facilities. And so that's why we went back to the 2040 list, and we said, "We're just gonna prioritize it based on true need." And yes, that means a lot of your city connections are at the bottom of the list. Does it mean they should stay there in 15 years? I think you should look at it again and see what you really need to make those connections locally. And so that was kind of the reasoning behind what we did. At the end of the day, it's our recommendations, but it's the city's needs that need to be met. And so if you get down to it, and doing something about Greenbrier right now in 2025 is not important enough because you can get TechStop matching, and you can get them to help improve the facilities, and you can spend your money there, then by all means, do that. Those are big roads. Those are important roads. But we were looking at what can you spend city money on and let TechStop spend TechStop money on.
That makes a lot of sense. I appreciate you clarifying that because my first glance at this is the 2025 list is kind of a Band-Aid. It's stuff that we all logically can see for ourselves, and we're all sitting there going, "Hey, that's pretty logical." And I know for years, 2351, we've wanted it to be widened, and TechStop said they wouldn't have anything to do it until we ran our four-foot culvert. That culvert's now in, and Mo, I'd love for you to speak for the possibility of having 2351 and TechStop actually come in and widen that, and we could have maybe a median down the center, or however that might be. But we've been talking about 2351 for years, so I'd like to see us flip all the 2040 priorities to 2025 because the people that are getting hurt out here are not because they have a turn. Well, some of them are because we don't have adequate turn lanes, and we don't have adequate timing of our lights and everything. But our infrastructure right now is, and I've mentioned it to the council before, is I feel like we're behind the A-ball on it because we haven't been able to get some of these things taken care of. Our parallel corridors, lightening up 518, you can't get down 518 at 5:00. You can't get down Sunset at 5:00. If we don't have any other parallel corridors, it's only gonna get worse. So I just would love to see 2040 get flipped to 2025, and I'd like to have an update on TechStop and 2351, if you have anything.
Just simply that 2351 is now able to be widened since the drainage project was completed in 2018, I believe. TechStop has reduced their priority on that project to beyond 2045. It is in the RTP for the expansion of 2351, but it's not a higher priority for them.
And so part of the reason we did the short term, again, I'm gonna call it low-hanging fruit, projects that we identified in 2025, is there's two big parts of the puzzle. Right-of-way acquisition, you have to go buy it, and it's usually a costly, timely expenditure that has to take place, and you usually end up with some angry people who don't care about mobility, and they want to hold on to what they've got. And then the other part of that is funding. So if you saw the price tag on those widening jobs, they're not cheap. And so we need opportunities to be able to get the federal matching funds. We need the state's dollars to make those projects realistic. And so to even get them to start thinking about it, they've gotta get it on the RTP, and then we can start pushing it to pull it forward. So maybe it's not 2040, maybe it's 2030. But looking long-term, looking at the dollars and what we could achieve with what we thought we could get with the minor improvements to build in the capacity, that's where the recommendations stem from. Now, that being said, you should absolutely pull for as much money as quickly as possible to get these improvements.
I think by 2030 or 2040, we're gonna be in a lot of trouble if we don't pull some of the 2040 up. And that's my own personal opinion. And I ran on the fact that I'd like to see people not being killed over here on 528. And we've lost a lot of people over there, and we've gotta do something of opening that up in some way. And I just think that that's something that we need to move as a high priority to the front of the list.
And not to belabor this, and this will be my last comment, Mayor, but this, again, is a tool in order for us to advocate to the state and orders for us to advocate to HDAC to get higher rankings. But we're not operating in a vacuum, so these projects, despite them not being high priorities for TechStop, have to rank higher from a benefit-cost ratio than TechStop's other obligations throughout the entire Houston district, which is rather massive. And so we're gonna keep pushing for these, and we're gonna keep providing this information. But if it doesn't meet the benefit-cost ratio for another area, they're gonna put the funding in another area. So this is a great tool that we can actually now approach them and say, "Hey, we need some attention here."
And this is what this was intended to be. This was the first step to say, "Guys, listen up."
And I thank you for that. You did a great job. I did not want you to think that that wasn't the case. I think you did a great job.
I got one question, and I don't know if anybody's up here might have this answer. Have we ever done a study like this in the past, years ago, that we're maybe actually experiencing some of what we did that study on back then?
So historically, Friendswood is refrained from this holistic of a study. There have been studies done of problematic areas, and those were things that we engaged TechStop with. But from a traffic standpoint, we've never undertaken this as a city because the majority of our main roadways are state roads. We realize, though, that the state won't take care of us to the extent that we think we need to be taken care of in a timely fashion, so that's what motivated this.
Okay. Yeah, I was just trying to figure out, as we look down in the crystal ball, how accurate do these things get when we get to the 2040s? And, you know, where are we? How big did the city get compared to these studies? And what are we seeing based on what we've done in the past? But I can see where, it was hard to judge back then that we were gonna get this kind of growth.
You're talking to the expert right here, so I have a feeling it's gonna be spot-on.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I would like to recommend that you don't just put this on a shelf and let it die. It's very easy to do. You're like, "Oh, we've got this report. This is great. Let me tuck it away." And then five years go by, and we haven't had the pressure, and then it needs to be dusted off periodically. Does it need to be every year? No, not necessarily. Does it need to be every three to five? Probably wouldn't hurt. By the time you hit five, you probably really want to reevaluate and see, make those comparisons. Are we on track? Has our growth slowed? Where are we seeing, has the problems shifted because it got too bad? What else can we do to push this forward to the next step to get more funding, to get our problems fixed?
Don't worry. We will not be able to put it on the shelf and forget about it. We've got a lot of people that tell us all the time, John Scott can't even walk in HEB anymore. When are you fixing my road? When are you making this traffic better? So we appreciate it. This will give us the ammunition to go forward. Traffic's too bad.
So what is our next step?
I think we sit down in our next, probably retreat timeframe and start to discuss prioritization of the steps.
Correct. And in the meantime, obviously, we were gonna make applications to various agencies when the call for projects come up for us to submit an application to. We will be meeting with TechStop with, on the results of this study, on some of the more critical intersections to do something sooner as opposed to later, within the next month or two.
Well, from our audit report, it looked like we had almost $3 million of unassigned funds. I think that we could partner with somebody and maybe get some of this stuff worked on. We're going into 131 days of reserve when we've got $2.9 million that we could partner with somebody with. Maybe we could do some bigger projects.
And staff is looking at that even as recently as today, we met with the state in that regard.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. This is exactly what we need to move forward.
Great.
Start solving these traffic issues.
Well, we look forward to helping you fix your traffic. Thank you.
All right, moving on, we're gonna, 6 o'clock, thank you, sir. We're gonna move down to item 12A, so those are in the gallery. If you didn't know, you were here for second grader night. You're about to find out. Let me read this. Let's get motions ourselves, and then we'll invite these people in. We'll take the vote after, but let's get the reading and the motions out of the way, if you don't mind. Resolution number 2020-04, a resolution of the City of Friendswood, Texas, declaring March 6, 2020 as Wedgewood Elementary School Day in the City of Friendswood, Texas.
Move to approve?
Got a motion?
Second.
Motion and second. Okay. I always hate this part about, "Open the doors," because, you know, run for cover. You know, this is the sixth time that we've actually done this. This is the second time for Wedgewood. So we've done each of the three elementary schools in Friendswood twice now in the past two years. This is everybody's favorite council meeting, you know, for obvious reasons. And it's been great for us to invite these kids in, give them a chance to learn a little bit about how government works. I know some of y'all in the audience that brought these kids said, "Where is City Hall? Where do they meet for City Council?" So it's great that you all came in, and you get to see a little bit about, you know, what we do here. You know, all these people up here, all the city council members are volunteers. So, you know, we'd like these kids to understand a little bit about public service and giving back to their community. And we're also helping to foster a little bit of leadership development in these kids. You know, these kids were selected by the students and by the teachers and the principal at Wedgewood, I'm sure, and identified as future leaders. So we're looking forward to, in the future, maybe one of you all will actually come back and be a real council member, you know, for a while, or a mayor. People are always happy when they see a different mayor up here. And so we're also here, you know, supporting our school districts' character education programs. So I'm gonna introduce all these folks real quick. These aren't laptops.
Sorry.
Didn't Planning and Zoning Commissioners say that? These haven't been laptops for a couple of months now, Lisa.
Hey, you know what, though? Maybe we can scoot it over a little bit, and you can scoot your chair this way. So your face can be right there.
All right, while we're sorting that out, I'm gonna come over here. City manager, Joe Arani, Sue. Joe Arani? Her teacher is Brittany Averitt.
Hello.
Where's Brittany? All right, Brittany. Our city attorney, Maximus Ekin. Your teacher is also Brittany Averitt. Council position number one, Julio Artiga. Alexis Markowitz, thanks for being here. Council position two, Autumn Berentine.
Hello.
Hello.
Melissa Chambers. All right. Council position three, Nabubay Ahem and Avery Long. All right. Mayor, the key role here in the whole-
Keep thinking that, Mike.
Grant Peterman, and you're also in Melissa Chambers' class. Awesome. Council position four.
Yes.
Victoria Sepultes, Avery Long, again. Do y'all have five second-grade classes? Is that figuring out here? So two from each classroom, it looks like. Council position five, Sidney Rodriguez, Rebecca Roswell. Is Rebecca here? Oh, these kids just teach themselves now? Who's filling in for Rebecca Roswell? Oh, she's not here, so.
Long-term staff's not here.
Okay, long-term staff. So there is someone here. Council position six, John Diaz, another Rebecca Roswell. City Secretary Kaylin Brown. And again, you're in Ms. Markowitz's class.
Oh, yeah.
Awesome.
She's one of the best.
What's the first line? Is that you?
No, it's city manager.
Oh, I'd take control. I'd hit her if I were the president.
Mayor and council, tonight you have before you Resolution R 2020-
Mayor and council, tonight you have before you Resolution R. 2020 declaring March 6, 2020, Wedgewood Elementary Day in Friendswood, Texas. As you know, Wedgewood Elementary is a part of Clear Creek Independent School District and is an exemplary campus and a source of pride for our community.
Has our city attorney approved the wording for our resolution?
I have drafted the wording of the resolution, and it is in line with the vision statement of the City of Friendswood.
Will our city secretary please read the city vision statement for the record?
The City of Friendswood has the following statement as its vision. Together we build our future in a friendly place to live, work, play, learn, and worship.
I will now read the resolution. A resolution of City of Friendswood, Texas declaring March 6, 2020 as Wedgewood Elementary School Day in the City of Friendswood, Texas. It is now time to take a vote. Do I have the motion to accept the resolution?
I move to accept the resolution as presented.
I second that motion.
Any discussion?
At Wedgewood Elementary, we pledge to be kids with character.
At Wedgewood Elementary, we will be honest, reliable, and worthy of trust.
We will be responsible and fair doing what we must.
At Wedgewood Elementary, with our words and actions, we show that we care.
We will be good citizens and do our share.
At Wedgewood Elementary, we will respect ourselves and others, too.
We'll respect the best in all we do!
All the council members, you have a vote.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, please raise your hand. Motion passes seven to zero. Congratulations, Wedgewood Elementary School. This portion of the meeting is adjourned.
Communications from committees and special reports. I'm going to move item 10A up. Annual report from Planning and Zoning Commission Chair, Joe Matranga.
Excellent judge. Excellent practice.
Yeah, absolutely. I take offense to that, because I was there last Thursday.
I'm just joking.
You were good, too.
No, no, not at all.
Night and close.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and members of city council. Thank you for the opportunity to let me come before you tonight and go over, present the Planning and Zoning Commission's 2019 activities, and I'm going to touch ever so briefly on 2020 as well. Overall, planning and zoning had a really busy and a productive year. We had 18 meetings that we had. We had many, many subcommittee meetings, not counting training and workshops. And I'm going to go, before I get into the details of that, I would like to take a moment and just start out by recognizing that we could have not gotten all these things, great things I'm going to talk to you about, we wouldn't have been able to get that done without the super support from city staff, and especially Aubrey Harbin, Becky Bennett, and Mary Kay. Without them, you'd have seen, we would not have nearly got as far as we got. So, on the commission right now, we have Brett Banfield, we have Dick Clark, we have Eric Gunther, we have Lisa Lundquist, myself, and we have, I'm just going through the list, I ought to just look up, Marcus, Mark Perry, and Rich Sassen. Those were our commissioners in 2019 and our commissioners today. We also have, and I want to at least not, as part of our team on the Planning and Zoning Commission, are our city council liaisons, Trish Hanks and Sally Branson, who are always there to help us out in any way possible. So, one of the key things that planning and zoning does is Platts. And in 2019, we approved eight preliminary Platts and extension. That compares to six that we approved in 2018. So, a little bit of an increase. And final Platts, and some of the preliminary Platts become final Platts in the same year. And you can see from the list, I'm not going to go through them all, but some of those did that, that started out as preliminary and ended up as final Platts in 2019. We had eight of those, which is the same as we had in 2018. One of the other key things that planning and zoning does is, in the commercial development process, we approve commercial site plans. We approved 10 commercial site plans, including Chick-fil-A, Paintball Zone, Valvoline, and you have the list before you. So, that compares to eight that we had in 2018, so another slight increase. We also approved five site plan amendments and extensions, and you can see the list there for those. That compares to four in 2018. Another of the Planning and Zoning Commission's responsibilities is to recommend zoning changes, to look at them, evaluate them, and make recommendations to city council. In 2019, we had 10. And they run through the gamut, from single-family residential to downtown, to planned unit developments, to revisions, to planned unit developments. Again, for the time, I won't go through them. You have the list in front of you. But another important role, we had 10 of those compared to five in 2018, so a big increase. So in addition to things like zoning, Platts, and site plans, we had a, kind of a long list of other accomplishments in 2019. So, we did the annual review of the permitted use table in the NAICS codes. We provided many recommendations to city council, major thorough plan update, post-Harvey stairs recommendations, and the study of land use assumptions and capital improvement plan as part of our responsibilities on the commission. We were a small part of achieving platinum status on the scenic city program. And, you know, again, that's another one with, obviously, the city staff did all the major lifting, but we had a part to play in helping change some of those ordinances. So, a huge accomplishment for that team, getting that done. So we were part of that, changed ordinances, changed zoning, made recommendations throughout the year. So, again, a busy year for planning and zoning, and as I said earlier, we had 18 meetings throughout the year, plus many, many subcommittees on planning and ordinance subcommittees. So that's it for, as a summary for 2019. I just briefly mentioned for 2020, we've got a number of things that we've identified so far as part, that came out of our workshop. I'm sure it'll change. Things will come in and come out as priorities change in the city. But, obviously, the comprehensive plan is one of our, is our number one thing that we're working on, working with city council, working with city staff on what we can do to help on developing and updating that comprehensive plan. Obviously, reviewing and updating zoning ordinances, several that we're looking at, and then review and update the subdivision ordinances. Some is on our radar to kind of look at and see if there's an opportunity there. So with that, that really concludes my prepared remarks, unless you have any questions or comments.
Nice job, Joe.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Great job.
All right. Got to get back on track here. Let's see. Item seven, public hearing to receive comments from the public, both oral and written regarding A's proposed amendments to Appendix C zoning ordinance sections 10 through 12 regarding Board of Adjustment establishment and procedure, powers and duties, and appeals from the Board of Adjustment and section 20 definitions to be consistent with state law, particularly chapter 211 of the Local Government Code.
Good evening. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on February 13, and the consideration of this item was a unanimous vote in favor of it. We had one commissioner absent, so the vote was six to zero. And basically, these amendments will bring zoning Board of Adjustment authority in line with state law and amend our definition of variance.
Thank you. So are there any members of the public that would like to speak either in favor or against All right. And going on to the second public hearing item, proposed amendments to Appendix C zoning ordinance, section 7 dot P dot 6 permitted use table regarding changes for NAC's use number 447 gasoline stations, number 511 Publishing Industries, and number 713 940 Fitness and Recreational Sports Centers.
All right. I'm going to explain these changes in a little more detail. So the proposal was to change for the gas stations, is to change the SUP in downtown district to blank, which would not allow gas stations in downtown any longer, to change use number 511, which is Publishing Industries, by adding a P, which is permitted, to allow by right a community shopping center, and to change from requiring a specific use permit in downtown to be permitted to allow the use by right. And then for use number 713 940, it's Fitness and Recreational Sports Centers, to basically remove the SUP requirement and change it to P in downtown district. Planning and Zoning Commission held their public hearing on February 13, and the vote was again unanimous in favor of the changes, six to zero.
Thanks, Aubrey. So, any citizens would like to speak either in favor or against this amendment, these amendments? All right, thank you. Going on to item eight, communication from the public to comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act. The city council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. The council may refer this item to the city manager or direct this item to be placed on the next regular council agenda. Out of respect for those speaking during public comment, please refrain from any outbursts or interjections, to include, but not limited to, applause and/or disparaging noises from the audience. Doing so discourages others from voicing their thoughts and opinions and disrupts the meeting. Furthermore, any personnel complaints against a city employee, aside from the city manager, city secretary, city attorney, or municipal judge cannot be discussed under this section. Please contact the city manager's office for concerns involving a city employee. Lisa Lundquist.
Think you know the drill. That means you've got one minute left, and then stop.
Thank you for listening to me. What I'd like to bring in front of city council is, I've been on some initiatives at NASA, and one of the things that really struck me was that you think globally, act locally. And what I wanted to talk to you about today is that I feel like Friendswood is an amazing city to live in. It has awesome parts to it. And what I want to talk to you about is to encourage city council to put together a sustainability plan. I think we've seen with the flooding and with things that are happening globally, that the time for that is now, to look into those plans. And some of the big things that I want you to consider is with Friendswood being on a corridor for migration patterns, for birds and for butterflies. We have an opportunity, while we're looking at terracing Clear Creek, to put something in there in conjunction with that terracing for, to go along with bird sanctuary and butterfly sanctuary, and making those where you have trails where people can be part of that. Another thing I'd like for us to look at as part of the plan is connecting our green spaces, so that you can walk or bike in between those green spaces. Another part of being a sustainable city, and I believe just like scenic city, there's a sustainable city kind of thing that you can go for, or a green city, and I am more than willing to look into that, is look at what we can do as a city as part of our sustainability plan to reduce plastic. We are a coastal city. We are so close to the coast. And so, what we do has impact. And I'd like for, to see Friendswood be on the forefront of looking into that kind of sustainability, and be a city that's not just the best place to live, but also, not just because of low crime and things along those lines, but also because of what we do with sustainability for our children and our future. Another big part of that could be a tree protection plan, because urban gardens and urban forestry is a real thing. It brings value to your community, and it preserves your heritage as a community. So I would like to encourage council to consider a sustainability plan put together that includes all the things that are important to us as a city. That's where I'm at.
Thanks, Lisa. Connie Breakbill.
I would like to talk to you about development, but maybe not tonight. Just a joke, just a joke. The sign above you has the live oak tree. And the live oak tree means a great deal to me personally, for a lot of reasons. My father asked my mother to marry him under a live oak tree at the University of Texas in 1933. So, I am a little concerned about the live oaks that might be removed at the Friends Church Parsonage for development. And I hope that you'll remember that people have been sitting under those trees in Friendswood for decades, for the Fourth of July parade, for, you know, all homecoming parades. Those are heritage trees, and they're in the top 10 lists of the Friendswood Historical Society, those trees on Friendswood Drive. So I would encourage you to protect these trees, adopt a tree ordinance similar to the other cities near us. Lake City has one, and Pearland and Clear Lake Shores. So, those trees bring a lot to the way our city looks and to our history. I'm here advocating for the oak trees. Thank you.
Thanks, Connie.
Mayor, can I ask that next month, we have this on the agenda to talk about?
Sure thing. Plan. Okay, item nine, city manager's report.
This... Mayor and council, this should be fairly brief. Coming up on Saturday, March 21st at 9:00 a.m., we have our annual youth sports day parade and event at Renwick Park. The parade will start around 9:00 o'clock in the morning around East Heritage and go towards 2351 to Renwick Park. The event is intended to commemorate the start of baseball and softball season for both Friendswood youth baseball and girls softball. And I don't know which council member, but two of y'all will be throwing out the first pitch at the event at Renwick Park. Related to, so I hope you're warming up your arms. Sidebar comment.
Could be a drawing at the parade?
I figure everyone arm wrestle, and then they should be fairly exhausted to throw out the first pitch. Also, at Renwick Park, the Rotary, Friendswood Rotary Club recently completed some youth playground equipment installments out behind the concession and restroom buildings that are very well done. I think the mayor and I were both out there. I don't know how much we contributed to the activities, but if you haven't been out there, by all means, please look. It was a very nice job done by the part of Friendswood Rotary. With regard to Hurricane Harvey, our hazard mitigation grant program is nearing completion on the buyouts. We're looking at about 13 properties total that are going to be closed. A number of homeowners decided to move on that were originally in the 26 home list. We did mention to you previously that the Texas Water Development Board did approve and obligated our flood mitigation assistance buyout program for the four properties. We should have the last appraisal here later this week, early next week, and hopefully offers will be extended shortly thereafter. On our community development block grant disaster recovery on the Harris County side, this includes the Black Hawk facility, the old Food Lion, the Forest Bend Flood Mitigation Project. Those projects are awaiting a contract from Harris County Commissioners Court that I can present to you following their action, so that we can get those efforts started. On the Galveston County side, all of our projects, which include Frenchman's Creek, Deepwood buyouts, as well as some of the utility relocation at Polly Ranch, burying those lines under Clear Creek. GLO is still waiting for the low to moderate income threshold to be met elsewhere in the county before those applications are acted on, so we're still having to wait there. Lastly, with regard... Lastly, with regard to Clear Creek, the lower Clear Creek and Dickinson Bayou watershed study that's being conducted by the Army Corps of Engineers and League City, Friendswood, and a number of other partners, there will be a public meeting this Wednesday night at the high school, Friendswood High School at 6:00 PM. This is the first of many public hearings, or public meetings early on to receive input from the public regarding flooding in their, in their area. So, I would encourage the public to attend this Wednesday at the Friendswood High School at 6:00 PM. That's it.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 11, discussion of possible action. Item A, discuss, discussion of possible action regarding the approval of changes to the event permitting process. Again, motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion.
I'll second.
Motion to second. Discussion. Anybody else say anything else?
Real quickly, isn't what we propose Proposition 1 or Proposition 2, right? Is this the same item?
Yes.
So, are we moving to approve Option 1 or Option 2?
Or both.
Or both.
So, I understood that the applicant can decide, is that, that was whatever?
No, Option 1 was get the money.
Okay, then I, I would like to amend my motion to say that we approve this with Option 1.
I second that. Further discussion? All in favor? Good job, James.
Thank you.
Item B, discussion of possible action regarding appointments to the following committees, boards, and commissions. Fourth of July Steering Committee appoint Nancy Sims to an unexpired term expiring in November 2022 to replace Corey Kirplin, who resigned. Appoint Larry Sims to an unexpired term expiring in November 2022 to replace Nicole Morgan, who is not reappointed.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor? Item C, discussion of possible action regarding the acceptance of the certification of unopposed candidates.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Roger.
Motion to second. Discussion?
I really oppose this.
Yeah, that's a good feeling, yes.
I'm relieved.
Steve Rocky's never heard those words. All right, item 12, resolutions, we already did. Item A, resolution number 2020-05, a resolution of the city of Friendswood, Texas, Galveston, Harris Counties, authorizing participation in North Central Texas Council of Governments' North Texas share program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Resolution number 2020-06, a resolution of the city of Friendswood, Texas, Galveston, Harris Counties approving capital, equipment, leasing, financing terms for the purchase of a fire truck.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mayor, and just to add, this particular fire engine, or fire truck, however you like to refer to it, is anticipated to be delivered in April timeframe.
Does it have a ladder attached to it?
No ladder attached to this one.
Then I call it fire engine.
Fire engine it is.
But I'll, you know, I could, okay. We have motion to second. All in favor? Item D, resolution number 2020-07, a resolution approving the adopting, approving and adopting updates slash amendments to the Design Criteria Manual for the city of Friendswood, Texas, approving the standards contained therein for the design, construction, and installation of public infrastructure and related facilities and improvements within the city, repealing all prior design criteria manuals and repealing other resolutions or parts of resolutions inconsistent or in conflict herewith.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? All in favor? Item E, resolution number 2020-08, a resolution of the city of Friendswood, Texas, Galveston, Harris Counties approving capital, equipment, leasing, financing terms for the purchase of an ambulance.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor?
No, just gonna mention that ambulance is already in service.
Glad it approved. Some of those patients are gonna have to be picked up and taken back to their homes. Okay, ordinances.
Comes out of your chair.
Yep.
Ordinance number T 20-08, second and final reading of an ordinance granting to Centerpoint Energy Resources Corp., doing business as Centerpoint Energy, Texas Gas Operations, the right, privilege, and franchise to construct, install, extend, remove, replace, abandon, operate, and maintain its facilities within the public rights away of the city of Friendswood, Texas, with transportation, delivery, sale, and distribution of natural, natural gas, providing for a term of 30 years.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. Discussion? All in favor? Okay, ordinance number T 20-10, first reading of an ordinance amending the code of ordinances, chapter 54, offenses and miscellaneous provisions, article 3, protection of citizens, employees, municipal property, by amending section 54 dash 48 entitled interfering with city officers and employees.
I make the motion.
Second.
Motion to second. Question on this one? All in favor? Ordinance number T 20-11, first reading of an ordinance amending the code of ordinances, chapter 14, building and building regulations, article 8, swimming pools, by amending section 14 dash 356 entitled barrier requirements.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor? Opposed. Five to two. Okay, T 20-12, first reading of an ordinance amending the code of ordinances, chapter 82, traffic and vehicles, article 2, fire lanes, by amending section 82 dash 62 through 82 dash 71 regarding fire lane requirements, enforcement, and penalties for violation of division.
Motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor? Close. Five to two. Item E was pulled, we're down to item F. Ordinance number T 20-14, first reading of an ordinance amending the code of ordinances, chapter 14, building and building regulations, article 2, building code, by amending section 14 dash 25 through 14 dash 28 regarding trash on construction sites, site drainage, restoration of property to original condition, and housekeeping practices on construction sites.
I make the motion.
Second.
Are we, are we on E? We skipped it, got pulled.
Oh, we're on F.
Right, yeah. Okay, all in favor? Is that unanimous?
Yes.
Wave.
I was, I was kinda lost on my way. F.
Yeah.
All right, ordinance number T 20-15, first and final reading of an ordinance of the city of Friendswood, Texas declaring the unopposed candidates for city council position two, Sally Branson, and city council position five, John Scott, elected, canceling the May 2nd, 2020 general election and a runoff election on June 13th, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Linda, say something to us about this election.
Okay, let me write these motions first.
Why are you even speaking during this?
Okay. So, as most everybody up here knows, but not everybody out there might know, but this request is to approve ordinance 2015, which calls for the canceling of the general election because there were no opposition to position two and position five. So, they will be declared elected, but their names will still be on the ballot because we still have a special election that's going to be on the ballot for the sales tax for streets. So, their names will still be on the ballot, but they're gonna be declared elected. So, there's no need to vote for them because they're in, they just have to still be on the ballot because we have a special election that's still gonna be taking place May the 2nd. So, make sure and get out and vote.
With early voting?
With early voting, April the 20th through the 28th, and election day is May the 2nd.
At the old junior high.
At the old junior high, yes.
Which has turned out spectacular for the primaries.
Everybody is, congratulations.
Hey, wait, wanna say anything about what's on the ballot?
As Melinda said, it's the street and sales tax reauthorization, the three eighths of a cent, sales tax for streets.
Reauthorized every four years.
By state law, and as you saw in previous months, the revenue stream associated with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Ordinance number T 20-16.
Did we vote? Did we vote? We have to vote? No, we didn't vote.
All in favor? Congratulations.
Yes.
Three more years.
Y'all can still vote for us if you'd like to, it's okay.
It will not be an option.
Oh, shoot.
T 20-16, first reading of an ordinance amending Appendix C zoning ordinance, section 10, Board of Adjustment establishment and procedure, section 11, same powers and duties, section 12, appeals from the Board of Adjustment, and section 20 definitions, variance.
I make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion to second.
This is the Board of Adjustment, right?
All in favor? All right, almost done. T 20-17, first reading of an ordinance amending Appendix C zoning ordinance, section 7, scheduled district regulations subsection 7 dot P dot 6 permitted use table, amending the following NACs uses, number 447 gasoline stations, number 511 publishing industries, and number 713 940 fitness and recreational sports center.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion to second.
I have just a quick question. So, we don't want any gasoline stations in the downtown district now, is that what we're doing with this ordinance? Is we're not permitting any gasoline stations?
Gas stations.
Any new gas stations?
Right.
And we just don't like gas stations?
Not downtown.
We had already prohibited them, new ones.
We had changed it to require a specific use permit, which doesn't prohibit them, it requires P and Z recommendation, public hearings, and then city council ultimate approval of...
For special use.
Yeah, for them to go in. So, with just the pedestrian friendliness of the downtown district, our eight-foot sidewalks with the brick pavers and the benches and the lights and trees down 518, gas stations just kind of deter from that with the canopies and, you know, filling station, it just kind of takes away from, you know, the amenities that we're having owners put in.
Okay.
Thanks, Aubrey. Any other comments? All right, all in favor? Ordinance number T 20-18, first and final reading of an ordinance amending city of Friendswood, Texas, ordinance number T 2019-38 passed and approved October 7th, 2019, saying being an ordinance approving and adopting the city's general budget for fiscal year 2019 to 2020 by approving budget amendment for the original general budget of the city of Friendswood, Texas for fiscal year 2019 and 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor? Communication from mayor and council members. Anybody?
Well, I'll go first. I would like to welcome the most worshipful grand master of my universe, his name is Robert Jacob Griffin, and he was born on February the 27th to my son and beautiful daughter-in-law, and he's just absolutely perfect, and I'm just having the best time with him, and I just wanted to mention him this, today, this evening, so really fired up about my little boy. Oh, my, my grand boy.
Awesome. Brett?
Everybody, I'm sure to remember, we're talking about voting, tomorrow's the last day to vote for these primaries, seven, did they poll close at seven o'clock here tomorrow?
Yes.
So, remember to get over there if you haven't yet, it's a pretty easy process, in and out of there, flawless, and remind everybody if they haven't yet.
Thanks, Brett. Connie, you got anything?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, uh...
Tough campaign.
Well, either, either, I think everybody forgot. Or nobody cares enough to try, but, no, in all sincerity, I'm, I'm humbled that, that I'm given three more years. This will be my fourth and final term, and I never would have thought in a million years that I would be in the position I am, being given the opportunity to be part of the leadership fabric of the community that I was raised in, and so it is extremely humbling, and I'm very proud to do it. So, thank you very much.
Great job. Well, I think it's a testament to the great job you and Sally are doing, and that everybody is content with, with the way, with the job you're doing, and bravo to you, I mean, nine years, and you're finishing up here, and three more, and rocking chair.
Yeah, that's what I said. I'm in way too many pictures back there in the hallway. Way too many.
For those that don't know, those pictures are right across from the mayor's office every time I walk out. I either see John's picture or Dave Smith's picture. Really getting tired looking at those faces.
I would just second that, and congratulations to both of you. I do think it's a testament of your leadership abilities and confidence that our community has in both of you.
Thank you.
Well, I too am humbled, this is only gonna be my second term, but I'm very, very grateful. I've worked on a lot of campaigns, and this is definitely the way to do it. Oh, it's the best. Also, just as a matter of interest, the Friendswood Historical Society will be having a meeting tomorrow evening, and Justin Estupinal, who worked on the 10 most significant oak trees in Friendswood project, will be doing a presentation. He did this at Rotary, he's headed a couple of other organizations, so for those who might be interested, please feel free to join us at the library at 6 o'clock in the Baker Room to hear that presentation.
What did you say?
Tomorrow.
Wow.
Tomorrow.
Not at the same time as our mayor.
Tomorrow's State of the City in case, nobody knew that. Mayor is talking tomorrow. Don't miss it, it's always good. But tomorrow evening at 6:00 in the Friendswood Library in the Baker Room. We have no, hey, Historical Society has no money, we're poor, we have no money.
Uh, congratulations to John and Sally. You've had an experience that I've never had and probably will never will, running unopposed, but good luck to you.
Well, I'll just say, thank you to Sally Branson, who, as mayor pro tem, sat in for me last month at the February meeting. I heard it went well. It was a lot shorter. I don't know about that, but, all right, consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor? Ooh, we're adjourned.